Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council will come to order. Madam Plurg, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is here. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell is here. Alderman King. Alderman King is here. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is here. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is here. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is here. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Zalaski Garza is here. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson is here. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas is here. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is here. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is here. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is here. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is here. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is here. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is here. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez is here. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is here. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett is here. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin is here. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Talafaro is here. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Raboyas is here. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona is here. Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Wagispack is here. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is here. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin is here. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Vegas is here. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Mitz is here. Alderman Spassato. Alderman Spassato is here. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent is here. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez is here. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano is here. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley is here. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith is here. Alderman Tunney. Alderman Tunney is here. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is here. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Kapelman is here. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is here. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman is here. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Haddon is here. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein is here. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor is here. Anyone else? Alderman Sawyer is here. Anyone else I missed walked in?
There are 44 members, President. We have a quorum. Members, please rise out for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Alderwoman Austin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
May we all bow our heads. Eternal God, our Father, we come this morning, Father God, first to say thank you. Father God, we thank you for the rising of the sun. But, Father, we thank you for the rising of your son, for the reason that we have life and that more abundantly. Father God, for all invocations that are done here, you've always said that for my children it's just a simple prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us, Lord God, as we forgive those that trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. So, Father God, for this simple prayer that you have given to us, we ask that you bless this council. We ask that you bless all that have attended, all that are here today. Father God, we ask that you bless our mayor as she takes our city forth. Father God, we're asking for just small prayers for those that are hurting in this city. We ask that you keep your loving arms around them. Father God, we're asking for all of those that are here today, those that want to come, those that are on their way, those that are watching through Zoom. Father God, we thank you for them. We thank you for all that are participating in today's council. We ask that you keep the eyes open. Let us work one with another in Jesus' name as we always shall pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Austin. Next up on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker is Charmaine Kilbasa.
Hello. I am retired Lieutenant Charmaine Kilbasa, and I am absolutely outraged by the mayor's executive order to force vaccinations on city workers and especially putting our officers in no pay status and stripping them. How dare you? Are you too busy to look at me, Mayor? Are you texting? Shameful. You can't listen to a Chicago citizen. This executive order that you're mandating against our officers and stripping them and putting in no pay status is absolutely ridiculous. They don't deserve it. The only thing this is about is control. You want to violate the collective bargaining unit of the FOP and the unions. All unions across the entire U.S. should be outraged by this. One other thing I have to say. Every exempt member on the Chicago Police Department should be ashamed of not standing up to your tyranny. Their silence on this speaks volumes, and every CPD officer should not have any respect for any of them. Very shameful. That's it. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Kilbasa, for your comments. Our next speaker is Richard Kilbasa.
Good morning. My name is Rich Kilbasa. I'm 59 years old. This is my first time ever attending or speaking at the City Council. I am compelled to be here because of this disgusting mandate by our mayor. I'd like to know if all the aldermen, just in case John Cantonzera can't speak, I'd like to see a raise of hand of all the aldermen that support the ordinance to cancel this mandate. I'd like to see a raise of hand. Aldermen, you make the laws in this city. Our mayor either votes for them or against them. We do not have a dictatorship. This ordinance is terrible. It's disgusting. How come there's not one rule for all city employees? How come different employees, different unions, have different rules? I hope you vote no for this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kilbasa, for your comments. Our next speaker is Anna Burke.
Yes.
Good morning. I join you today to respectfully speak about the property tax levy for 2022. I virtually attended the Finance Committee meeting on 10/21. I saw that many caring alderpersons wanted clarification about what individual wards would actually receive from proposed budgets. I know that plans can often be for multiple years, even though the proposed budget is for 2022. I can see from working in and staying in Chicago, Cook County, and various other counties that not all neighborhoods and schools appear to have the same resources. I am particularly concerned about the primary minority communities, what they are receiving. My name is Anna Burke. I am a state-licensed speech and language pathologist. I hold an Illinois professional educator license, and I also hold a national certificate of clinical competence from the American Speech, Language, Hearing Association. I went to Lockport High School and received a bachelor and master's degree from SIU Carbondale, where I served two years as an AmeriCorps National Service Member at schools in Carbondale, Illinois. My husband Matt Burke attended St. Ignatius College Prep and Brother Rice High School. My mother-in-law and father-in-law are retired Chicago police. My mother-in-law has been in heaven since 2010, and I have never talked to my father-in-law about his police job or benefits. Sadly, I have not seen or talked to him in nearly a year. Months ago, I experienced domestic violence in Will County. I thank God for this experience because I saw and learned things in our community I never would have otherwise known about. The Illinois Domestic Violence Hatline did not have any rides, food, or shelter in Chicagoland during the spring and fall of this year. I also could not find any emergency food or shelter I could use during COVID-19 during the spring of 2021. I contacted more than 40 places in Chicagoland. Chicago and suburban police did not have any valid resources to help me. I want to make sure Chicago police actually receive money for the consent decree. I am personally offering to provide policy development and training on police services for individuals with developmental disabilities. I am also concerned about police resources and pensions as I could not find a line item for police on my Will County property tax bill or on my mom's Cook County property tax bill after she passed away. After I experienced violence and could not find resources, I ended up living in my car, was hungry and tired. I got detained by Cook County Court without due process at Chicago Reed Mental Health Center. A judge never met me. I never committed a crime and was not a danger to myself or anyone else. I was abused at Chicago Reed, and I saw others, including people with disabilities such as autism, being abused there. I saw that our tax dollars are being used at a place that abuses people by restraining them with actual restraints, sometimes to a bed in a seclusion room, and giving injections of medication to people when they are not dangerous to themselves or others. This has to stop. Our tax dollars cannot be used for this. I am not a kind woman, Marcy Weber, at Chicago Reed, who had a friend set up a Facebook page called "The Truth About Marcy Weber" to speak about people with developmental delays being harmed at Chicago Reed and to advocate for herself. She was released by a DuPage County judge only to be unlawfully detained again without cause at Chicago Reed. She estimates her case is pushing $4 million of tax money. I had two doctors find me to be in good mental health since leaving Chicago Reed. It is time for change and accountability of resources.
Ms. Burke, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Alejandra Ibanez.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Alejandra Ibanez, and I am the Executive Director of Illinois Unidos, a statewide consortium of over 100 elected and appointed officials, health and medical professionals, researchers, community-based organizations, and community members. We came together last spring to ensure an equitable COVID-19 response and recovery for the state's Latinx population, which includes consistent culturally competent and linguistically appropriate outreach, messaging, and access that is free from systemic barriers that have kept many of our communities of color from access to health care and a full quality of life. Illinois Unidos is here to support the City of Chicago's vaccination mandate for public servants. Police officers are public servants and make an oath to serve and protect. Hundreds of licensed professionals are held to consistent statewide standards. Doctors, our doctors, are here to the same medical board regulations. This discrepancy undermines the ability of the public to hold police officers accountable. Police should be held to the same standards as other public servants and health care providers. Everyone stands to benefit from the vaccination mandates. Vaccination doesn't just protect the individual who gets vaccinated. It protects everybody around them. Even people who are unaffected by the mandates will benefit from the ripple effects of higher vaccination rates. Even Dr. Anthony Fauci, the nation's top infectious disease official, has shared more police officers die of COVID than they do from other causes of death. So, it doesn't make any sense to try not to protect yourself as a colleague that you work with. More than 230 police officers in the U.S. have died of COVID-19 so far this year, more than quadrupled the number of deaths by gunfire. Last year, the coronavirus killed 250 officers nationwide, including four here in Chicago. We are not free from COVID. Despite a decline of COVID positivity rates, COVID-related hospitalizations and other clinical outcomes remain high. The only way to eliminate COVID is through obtaining a higher vaccination rate. Our communities of color have already paid the highest price with disproportionate rates of COVID-19 infection, hospitalization, and death. And my message to our Latino police officers, we need your cooperation. Our community has already been hit incredibly hard by this pandemic. We need your partnership. Don't put your families, your partners, and our communities at even greater risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ibanez, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. George Blakemore.
My name is George Blakemore, and I am a concerned citizen, and I'm black, identifiable black. I came here to call my shambles and Auntie Mamas altemans out for not representing us when it comes to these goods, service, contracts, and jobs. The miseducation of the black men. The miseducation. And all of you black people that are out here, if you can see or hear me, I'm going live. Why are you not here? Why is it that you not here? And the system is broken. The machine is broken. It's slated by the Irish white man. They pick the black leaders. You don't. They slate them. The egregious act, the last election, only 30% of the voters in this city came out. Something is wrong here. Why would you have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the morning? Why not in the afternoon after the working people could come in and attend? Now, you out here, you have no representation. You got me. I'm here to speak on behalf of the black community. You deserve the government that you get, and you get the government that you get by having these donkeys representing you. I'm calling them out. The Hispanics represent their people. The whites represent their people, but the blacks sing kumbaya, kumbaya, trying to get along. Frederick Douglass said in 1895, "What would you suggest a black American?" I don't know if I'm a black American or not. They say, "Agitate, agitate, agitate." We're still on the plantation. Still on the plantation. You black so-called Auntie Mamas and Uncle Tom. It's terrible. We have no representation because you black people don't demand anything. That's why you get nothing. Zero from zero is nothing. Now, this budget, I advocated for 25% of the budget would go to black wards to service black people. That's what I'm advocating. Other black people, if you advocating something, you stand up and speak up and be seen.
Mr. Blakemore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Mr. John Cantonzera.
So, as Rich said, I just want to clarify. Rich said to vote no. What he meant to say was vote yes on the ordinance that's proposed. I'm going to challenge every alderman, in case you didn't hear it, and I'm going to make it loud and clear. That ordinance that Alderman Tabarez put forth puts control back in your hands. Everybody's going to see the live video feed and the replay of all of this right now. So, if you're not paying attention, it's going to be your fault. Every alderman who thinks in spirit it is right that you have control of what city policies get put forth to the city workforce. You can hate me, you can hate my message, but this is about the entire city workforce, not the Chicago Police Department, not even the FOP, and it's not about me. I want every alderman who supports in spirit what Alderman Tabarez's ordinance is calling for to raise their hand right now. If you do not raise your hand or you say, "I didn't hear it," that's going to be on you because we expect you guys to squash this because that's just what a dictatorship does. It's going to squash this ordinance before it even has a chance for breath. But I'm telling you, we're taking a report card, and anybody who does not raise their hand, you will be challenged in 2023. We are coming for every one of your damn seats because this is not the way a government is supposed to run. It is not a queen on that throne. It is a mayor. The mayor presents ideas. You help craft those ideas and become reality in ordinances. It is not, this is a caveat, take it or leave it. And shame on every one of you. When she challenged your automatic prerogative, you all lost your mind. How dare her challenge my automatic prerogative? You are literally handing it to her on a platter. Culpable deniability is not going to be an excuse here. You have the chance to stand up and change the way this chamber does business, finally. Everybody hated when Richie Daley decided that bulldozes mixed field in the middle of the night because he thought it was the right thing to do. Shame on him. One person should not have that kind of power. Everybody hated when Rahm Emanuel got rid of retiree healthcare with the stroke of a pen and laughed about it because he thought it was the right thing to do, and it wasn't. That is not the way city government is supposed to operate, and far too long now, everybody's sitting in those chairs, whether it's you or your predecessors, have allowed this to continue on generation after generation. It needs to stop today. This tyrant at the top needs to stop what she's doing. You have thousands of officers, and they have controlled this flow. They can tell you there's only 20-some officers in no pay status because they've controlled the flow. But tomorrow, you're going to see. I want every officer who's willing to go into a no pay status, who hasn't been called yet, to show up to Human Resources at 35th and Michigan, and you're going to see the hundreds of officers this police department is going to be without because this is about a labor dispute, not about a vaccine. It's about the city's resistance to negotiate at the bargaining table what this policy was supposed to look like from the beginning. Period, full stop.
Thank you, Mr. Cantonzera, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, resolutions. And we have one congratulatory resolution today for the Chicago Federation of Labor on the occasion of its 125th anniversary. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Good morning, Madam President. I move for the temporary suspension of the rules with the immediate consideration of this resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. We will follow our normal practice and not read the resolution in full, but are there members of the body who wish to be heard on this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I too, I rise in support of this resolution. I'm very proud to call the CFL my friend. I also want to say congratulations on 125 years of always standing up for the working class, always being there when a worker is in need, always lending an ear, always steering me in the right direction, giving me advice, good, bad, or ugly. Bob, sometimes I don't want to hear what you have to say, but you say it anyway. And I always take it with a grain of salt and much respect. I brought something special for you guys today. As you know, three years ago, my dad passed away, and I am in the process of cleaning out his basement, which is kind of like an archaeological dig. I found this down there, and I didn't think that it would look good in my front room. It's actually a banner from 1930. Eugene Debs, CIO before the AFL merged with the CIO, and it's got Eugene Debs' name on it. I'd like for you to have it. It will look better in your office.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. And don't worry, I think the statute of limitations is probably run. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. You know, Chicago is in so many ways the birthplace of the American labor movement, more local ones than any other city in the United States. It's the city of the Haymarket martyrs. It's the city where workers have taken to the streets time and time again to demand racial justice, social justice, and economic justice. And throughout those fights for the last 125 years, the Chicago Federation of Labor has been at the forefront of those fights. And so, I want to say, Bob, Don, thank you for continuing that spirit of an active and alive labor movement that stands for racial justice, that stands for social justice, that stands for economic justice. You all are part of that great history of great American labor leaders in the city of Chicago. You make the CFL proud, you make our city proud, and you make the American labor movement proud. Congratulations on this anniversary.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise to be associated with this resolution. Workers make the world go round, especially during these last 18 months. And even with the conflict and the debate that we are likely to have today, the CFL, all the unions that you bring together for a voice, you guys are such a vital institution to making sure that the residents in this city have their voices heard, just as vital, I would say, a city council. So, I celebrate your anniversary. I appreciate the hard work that you do. You bring people together. You bring what might not always be a ton of agreement to the table, and you guys do just a labor of love in making sure that at the end of the day, workers' rights are what are put to the forefront, worker safety and health, and we're here for that here in Chicago City Council. So, thank you. Thank you for being here today, and we appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution and congratulate you guys on your anniversary. Bob, you know, one thing that's unique about your organization, not only do you bring all the unions together, but you also bring government together. When government is not awakened to what you all are pushing for, you wake us up. But also, when your members are not awakened to the compromises that we need to make in government, you make it happen. I just want to say thank you very much for always being in the gap and making sure we all work together for the betterment, not just of your members, but for the betterment of the city of Chicago and the state of Illinois. Thank you very much, and congratulations to you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution to say thank you to the CFL for continuing the legacy of the labor movement that started in the Pullman community in the Ninth Ward. If you didn't know, the Labor Day was all started because of the labor movement that started in the Pullman area years ago with George Pullman and Abe Philip Randolph. All that history started right here in the city of Chicago. And so, there's no secret why unions are so strong here in the city of Chicago because it is embedded here in Chicago. So, I want to thank you all for continuing that fight and continuing that legacy, fighting on people who may not have a voice to fight for themselves. So, thank you so much. Congratulations, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much, Chair. Very glad to stand in support of this resolution as someone who, in the jobs that I've had, I've worked for 725 an hour in this city. I've had jobs where you had to be up at 7:00 in the morning in your suit to get called whether you were going to show up and then find out through these temp agencies. Thursday, I think 2:00 on a Friday, hey, congratulations, but this was your last day. I think for those of us who have worked outside of government and sadly, outside of a lot of [inaudible 00:00:39]. So what you do is so important, because the, let's face it, in this city, labor rights will never not be under threat in this city. So we need you all to keep fighting and fighting with us. And I find the name on that banner you were just handed convicted, because I know the world that was dreamed about 90 years ago, and I know that we are not quite there yet. So thank you for what you do, and we're going to need you for the next 125. So stay healthy.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also rise proudly in association with this resolution. Wanted to thank the CFL, thank Bob and Andrea and the team over there for all the work that they do and have done. This organization, we all know Chicago's a union town, and it's largely because of the work of the unions here and the fights that they take on. I know sometimes we look at it as history, but looking at the past couple of years, I think we all understand exactly how valuable it is to have you as an organization. Last year, when we were fighting to avert layoffs, it was you all who made the negotiations possible and used the strength of the union. You all represent the blue-collar workers and the people that have built and continue to build this city. So even though we have a lot of debate here, and we talk through everything at hearings, you all are on the ground, fighting for those members, and I am honored to be fighting with you. Thank you for everything you do, continue that fight, and know that we're here with you in council and supporting in solidarity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigdr Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I also like to rise in support of this resolution, and congratulations to the Chicago Federation of Labor for 125 years of organizing, of empowering workers across the city. As my colleague Alderman Beal said, there's a long tradition of labor organizing in Chicago. Chicago is a union town and continues to lead the way nationally because of the support to the workers. It was really inspiring to see the CFL being in the picket lines, supporting the Nabisco workers just recently. It is critical today more than ever that we continue to organize our workers, that we continue to empower workers in the midst of a pandemic where corporations and billionaires continue to exploit our workers. The work of the CFL is inspiring and transformational. We should commend it and continue to encourage our workers to be unionized for dignified labor conditions, for fair wages, and ultimately, for a city that welcomes our workers and treats them fairly. Thank you and congratulations for all the work that we do. We commend you as a member of SEU 73. We continue working in solidarity with you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Don, Bob, team, I want to congratulate today on the 125-year anniversary celebration of your work here in Chicago for Chicago workers. And looking back, you know, just reading some of the things that you have accomplished over the decades, you are still in this battle for fight, the fight against racial prejudice, the fight for workers' rights, the fight that all of our workers, in terms of their needs, will continue on. And when we've had disagreements, I have really appreciated the way that we've gone through those to find compromise when we have the most difficult situations we find ourselves in. And despite your, your push, despite your ability to really get those things done, it is always done in a way that is respectful of elected officials, respectful of those of us who are, might be looking at a different way of doing things. And coming to that compromise, I think, has been, for me, one of those great opportunities to work with you, to work with your staff, and to find a better way to do things. So I appreciate all of those efforts that you've undertaken, and hope that you will continue to exert that influence over government, not only here in Chicago, but throughout the U.S., to protect the workers and to provide a better life for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Wegasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution, just to say congratulations and all the hard work of our men and women in labor. As we celebrate birthdays, as we celebrate anniversaries, all those times are a time that we should reflect, reflect on what we need to improve, reflect on what we've done well and how we improve that. And so as we do that, I want to make sure these next years, not 100 years, but these next few years, reflect on diversity and leadership, especially among African-Americans within the labor union. And so that's very critical, because labor touches everybody, and everybody has to feel that they have a voice and a part of that. And so I encourage you not to, as I talk to correct, I do it to perfect. And we want to make sure that this union, CFL, is continually perfected for everybody in the city of Chicago. So as we celebrate, which I'm happy about, my dad worked many jobs, and it was his unions that saved his job many of times when they were discriminating against him. And but it's important that we continue to have those voices throughout the higher levels of our unions. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and congratulate the CFL on their 125th anniversary. I'm proud to represent many union members, working men and women in my ward, who are also members of the Chicago Federation of Labor. We have a number of different unions, from 399 to Local Two, Boiler Makers, Carpenters, all have their offices, the postal workers are all in our ward, and very proud of our relationship. And Bob, you stand on some shoulders of some great labor leaders, and I know you continue to, to do a fantastic job for all of the members of the Chicago Federation of Labor, and look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution, especially, labor is what this country was built upon. As I was sitting back here, Bob, I was thinking 125 years, I was thinking of Egyptian days and the pyramids, and I know you wishing you can be back there during that time like Moses with your spade in your hand, running around trying to organize. So I appreciate your leadership and your friendship. If I'm not talking with you, I'm talking with Andrea, and I'm proud to be called a friend of labor. So congratulations on your 125 years. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Forgive me, my friends, I'm behind this pillar, but I'll do my best to communicate. I think this resolution aptly summarizes some of the rich history of our great city and the labor movement. The 1886 Haymarket Affair, 94 Pullman Strike, 1937 Republic Steel Strike. I'm reminded of labor's rich history and the fertile ground that Chicago has been to influence what really is an international movement to create equity, to create equity in our economy. And when you look at our own nation's history, when we have growing rates of unionized labor, we have growing rates of equity in our economy. It's no small feat that we need to highlight, and the Chicago Federation of Labor has been at the core of that movement. Most recently, I was on the lines with CFL at Elm Millagro on 26th Street, and I'm reminded of the great efforts of the Chicago Federal, Federation of Labor, not just in our nation's and our city's past, but as it pertains to our current fights. And the current fights for equity and justice, particularly as it relates even to this council and our budget and the efforts that we have here in our great council. So I thank you very much, Chicago Federation of Labor, for your commitment to equity, for your commitment to justice, for your commitment to working together to create a better city of Chicago and a better region. Thank you so much, and I rise certainly in support of this resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. Bob, on behalf of representing the CFL, and a 43-plus-year, proud and active dues-paying member, I appreciate all you do, you and your predecessors before you. Without, without labor, 43 years ago, I know one of my colleagues said he was making $7.50 an hour 43 years ago. Only because of a union, I was making $15 an hour. So I know we had a recent fight now, 40-plus years later, for 15, I was making that 43 years ago as a teamster. But just appreciate all you guys do, all your support to me and the working men and women of not only my ward, the 38th Ward, but also of the city of Chicago. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Hello. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. To the CFL, congratulations as a 21-year member of the union, currently in good standing as well. One thing, simply put, what everyone said, thank you for always standing up for those when people won't. I appreciate what you do for our brothers and sisters. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Chicago Federation of Labor has been a voice and an advocate and willing to fight for those for the past 125 years. Many of those families live in my community. I just wanted to say to President Ryder, Secretary-Treasurer Valar, and your team, thank you for your strong leadership. Look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too join this resolution, a couple of factoids. You know, from 2019, I wanted to say you're more relevant than ever today than in 1864. In 2019, as a quarter, of quarter three, the top 10% of households held 7% of the country's wealth. Your importance in representing, in historical terms, when we, U.S. became a manufacturing powerhouse, labor was preeminent in protecting workers and creating a more social and just society. So today, we need you on the gig economy, we need you to protect workers there, we need you to get involved in these trillion-dollar corporations to bring more equity to folks on their pay and benefits. Please stay engaged, and congratulations from 1864 to 2021, you are what makes this country great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. And I also wanted to be associated with this resolution as the work of the CFL and the labor movement, also parallel some of the work in the city of Chicago as it relates to civil rights and correcting some of the injustices that existed amongst the people in the African-American community. And we definitely want to be in support of those that are supportive of us. But also echo some of the comments that Alderman Moore made, as we have to continue to work toward creating as diverse of a workforce and inclusive of a workforce as possible for members of the African-American community. But without your help and support, the things and the gains that we've made, we would not have today. So we definitely want to honor the work that you all have done and the work you continue to do on behalf of all of us in the city of Chicago. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I support this resolution as well. I want to congratulate the Chicago Federation of Labor for your 125 years. And wanted to mention, Alderman Beal talked about Pullman being one of the birthplaces of labor in Chicago, and I could argue that about 10 years before the CFL was founded, as was mentioned earlier, we had the Haymarket Riots. And actually, the statue for Haymarket Square for that event was literally 30 feet from my front door for the past 10 years. So going to work every morning, coming home every night, I was greeted by this statue. And I think that a lot of people forget what that, that incident was all about. People tend to think that organized labor focuses on benefits for their members only. And of course, that's part of the mission. But all of us, as American workers, have enjoyed incredible protections and enhancement to our jobs because of the work of organized labor. The Haymarket Massacre was about the fight for an eight-hour workday. And at the time, I guess that was considered revolutionary. Today, that's a basic expectation of any American who's going to work. So I want to say thank you so much for the incredible work you do. We sometimes disagree, but it's always been agreeably. And I would say that your willingness to compromise is appreciated, but one thing you don't compromise on is fighting for the rights of workers. And I think all of us are better for it. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Bob, Don, on behalf of the 13th Ward residents, congratulations. Thank you for all the work that you've done. Thank you for the work that you will continue to do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Quinn. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Bob, Don, on behalf of the 13th Ward residents, congratulations. Thank you for all the work that you've done. Thank you for the work that you will continue to do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Quinn. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and the CFL. I agree with my colleagues that the union is very intertwined in the fabric of our city, and that the CFL has been at the forefront of that. I enjoyed working with the CFL, especially around the Fight for 15 and other fights. My father-in-law, not a lot of people know, Irving King, was a proud union lawyer on a number of big issues. Google him. And, you know, I stand with him in supporting all of our unions. Bob knows that I have challenged the CFL to lead on more inclusion and diversity. I think the time is ripe for it. There's both the inclination and the opportunity. And of course, we'll be a better city for it. I'm proud to say that I appreciate that the CFL is rising to this occasion, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, and I appreciate it. So thank you, Bob, and the rest of the CFL for 125 years. Congratulations. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Forgive me. I too wish to rise to be associated with this item. Bob, Don, and everyone, I wish to congratulate you on your organization, on 125 years of service to the city of Chicago, but also to this nation. We've had plenty of experiences working together, most recently with the Right to Return for our Unite Here Brothers and Sisters. We've joined together, working to ensure wage theft was not happening for the carpenters, and we've been on the groundbreaking numerous times for the Park District Headquarters. No, our love for labor isn't just something that we speak on, on days like this. It's when you're there in the trenches, when your members, our residents, and our citizenry need us the most. And I think that oftentimes, we forget that lives are transformed when there's respect in the workplace, when there is honor for the hard work of individuals willing to get their hands dirty, to build this city, when we respect them and honor them with proper wages, with proper scheduling, with proper time off, with proper sick time, with proper health care, everything that CFL and your members have fought for, for decades. There is no monument, no testament, no resolution that is better than those daily reminders, which are the fruits of your labor, no pun intended, every day. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hurston.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, I too rise in support of this resolution. Bob and Don, thank you for your work. I've been with the CFL for a few decades, supporting various issues, and, and what I want to say is a very public thank you for having the wisdom to know which way to go. And maybe you didn't know exactly, but you have been there for the people of the city of Chicago, you have been there for family members, you have been there for the men and women that go out every day to do an honest day's work for an honest day's pay. It's, it's, it's a little sad that 125 years, we are still dealing with the same issues, and some of it is even worse than it was before. And so just keep up the good work. This is not easy. This is not- This is not easy. And, you know, I am happy for the 125 years, and I will stand with you, maybe not for the next 125 years, but as long as I've got. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
As someone who was raising a strong union household and is a current union member for over 20 years, I am forever indebted to unions. More importantly, thank you for being a voice for the people. Bob, recently, you released a statement that I want to read. It says, "The city of Chicago unilaterally imposed a vaccine policy on its workforce, which takes effect today. City unions under the umbrella of the Chicago Federation of Labor have consistently opposed a punitive vaccine policy, which could result in termination for failure, to be vaccinated by December 31st. In the alternative, our affiliates have recommended an ongoing vaccination or regular testing protocol, which would not expire or sunset. Thus far, the city has failed to accept that proposal, as well as other proposals impacting sick leave benefits regarding COVID-19. Several of our affiliates are prepared and in the process of challenging the city's unilateral imposition of this policy. While we believe there is more to be negotiated regarding the testing process and clarity around portals, our affiliates support a testing alternative. We believe that vaccination of workers is important to protect workers and their families. We do not, however, support discipline for the failure to be vaccinated. As other employees in jurisdictions around the country have recognized, allowing an ongoing testing alternative to vaccination protects the health and safety of workers and the public while respecting workers' rights. We will continue to fight, we will continue to fight to protect city workers, vaccinated and unvaccinated, responsibly and honestly, in the best interest of city workers and the communities we serve." Bob, thank you for being a voice for the people, all people. I know it's controversial. I know these are controversial times. But the idea of coming together and trying to negotiate what's in the best interest of all people is respected. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I wholeheartedly support this resolution, and I want to thank the Chicago Federation of Labor for their sustained commitment to workers over time, uplifting them, and making sure that they have absolute protections and fairness. I want to just congratulate Bob, Don, and Andrea for all of the hard work that you've done with the Federation of Labor, for being an organization that just doesn't deal with one industry, but looks at a lot of different industries and works with them, and for being available and supportive of workers during crises. I think the thing that I've always admired about the Chicago Federation of Labor is that you continue to advocate for your members and for your delegates during the city budget times. And we don't always agree, but you're always there in the midst of the fight, and that's very much appreciated, without compromising the mission and the value of the Chicago Federation of Labor. So, congratulations on 125 years and wish you well, and good luck with your marathon run.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too rise in support of this resolution, and just want to say thank you, Bob, and congratulations on your anniversary. I think the Chicago Federation of Labor do a great job of education along the way. As I was one of the ones, you know, that we didn't start out right, but it's not how you start out, it's how you end up. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be able to have those meetings to understand, to educate more about the mission, the purpose. And I appreciate the work that you all are doing, not only here in the city, but throughout the country. As we were attending many inaugurations, Chicago Federation at the forefront of those meetings, and I saw the opportunity, what you're not only doing here in Chicago, but throughout the country, just gave me even more of an eye-opener for the work that is being done and the mission. I also want to thank you for putting together all the organizations that you work with. I had to learn this, as I wasn't one, grew up in the labor movement. I had to learn about it. And it's truly been an eye-opener, and I do understand the right for people to be able to have more of a quality of life and not just a job of being pushed around. Thank you, and God bless you, and keep up the great work. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to join my colleagues in recognizing the 125 years of the Chicago Federation of Labor. Your advocacy and support and fighting on behalf of working men and women mirrors the growth of Chicago, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you also for the work that the men and women you represent have helped guide us through the pandemic. Every day, they got up to work, went and did what they could do. And as we look to come out of the pandemic, as we look to the budget we're going to have before us on Wednesday, and hopefully a federal infrastructure bill, we've got a lot of work ahead of us in how we can grow our city equitably, and the Federation will be right there in the forefront with their men and women. So, glad to work with you and continue the work that we have ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. And Bob and Don, I truly want to thank you for everything that you have done for all of the Aldermen in the city of Chicago, but all of labor. So, this is our opportunity to say how much we appreciate all your hard work and everything that you've done to empower workers across the city of Chicago, and again, the nation. So, again today, I'm grateful that we have Chicago Federation of Labor right here, making a real difference in the city of Chicago. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
President, I too rise in support for this resolution, especially when I think CFL, Bob, Don, and also Andrea for your support guiding me through my first two years, understanding what labor is. I thank you for that. And I thank you for being the voice of labor for the residents and the city of Chicago, but for the country as well. And that, I thank you, and the residents of the 31st, thank you for your commitment to labor for 125 years. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Congratulations to the CFL on 125 years. To Bob, Don, and Andrea, thank you for your partnership. Thank you for your friendship. Also, thank you for your professionalism as we work through issues. You guys are incredibly good to work with, and you always come back. And I know I personally pick your brain on issues all the time, and I appreciate you being so willing to have those conversations with me. So, congratulations on this incredible milestone. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sichu Lopez. Did you speak already? Okay, I thought you did. All right, the Chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution and congratulate Bob and the team. Oftentimes, as a small business owner, we're on the opposite side of the table, but our negotiations have been fair, and we've come to some really good compromises on moving our city forward. And I just wanted, on behalf of the business community, labor is an important part of our city and workers' rights. So, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tunny. Any other members of the body choosing to address this resolution? I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak to this resolution. As a child of a union steelworker, I know, because I experienced it firsthand, the power and the importance of unions. Since the birth of the American labor movement, Chicago's had a proud legacy and rich history of labor struggles and victories. In the late 1800s, a wave of labor strikes swept through the nation, when workers realized it was time to start demanding safer working conditions, better hours, and fairer wages. Some of the more noteworthy strikes took place right here in our city, and they've been referenced here today, of course, the 1886 Haymarket Matter and the 1894 Pullman Strike. A few years later, on November 9th, 1896, the Chicago Federation of Labor received its charter from the American Federation of Labor. From that point forward, workers in our city would always have the collective power and impassioned voice of the CFL to protect and advocate for them. Though the landscape has changed, they still have tirelessly fought for the same core values that were fought for 125 years ago: dignity and equitable treatment of all workers across all industries, regardless of race, ethnicity, nationality, citizenship status, or whether, in fact, they were union members. What began as a general trade assembly has grown into a 300-union, 500,000-member-strong organization guided by the spirit of solidarity. And anybody who's heard Bob speak, he always starts with his name, that he is a president of the CFO, and he is a proud representative of that union, those associations, and those members across a wide cross-section of unions. For example, the CFL championed global labor movements, inviting giants such as Mother Jones, Cesar Chavez, and Nelson Mandela to our city to uplift their fights. CFL committed to racial justice and represented underserved communities, even in times when it was so massively unpopular and unheard of to do so. The CFL stood strong. CFL circumvented the unsympathetic presses by creating a news publication and radio show to bring labor-related news directly to the working men and women of Chicagoland. CFL has played a role in history, giving unequivocal support for causes and campaigns like the Civil Rights Movement, led by the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, Harold Washington's mayoral campaigns, and the presidential campaign of Barack Obama, all the while earning consistent and fair scheduling, higher wages and better benefits, and improved workplace conditions across our region. In recent years, the CFL has fought against a rising tide of anti-unionism while advocating for increases in the minimum wage, fair work week laws, paid sick leave, and wage left, just to name a few. Those are fights that I was happy to join in with member unions and with the CFL. And in the last two years, the CFL has been instrumental in helping working people navigate the pandemic, as well as assisting our citywide vaccination efforts by standing up the first in the nation CFL COVID-19 vaccination site, which was visited by our great Vice President, Kamala Harris. Union members lined up for blocks to get their shots in a trusted place by trusted people. And I am sure, because of the work of the CFL leadership, the vast majority of city workers are vaccinated. Together, we have and we will continue this fight because it's about saving lives and creating a safe workplace. Rarely does a major campaign or initiative in Chicago, or Cook County, or our state succeed without the support and active involvement of the CFL. Our city is undoubtedly a better place, better served, because of the CFL's partnership with city leadership over the years and activism on behalf of CFL-affiliated workers. I'm honored to speak to the good this organization has done by presenting today's resolution in celebration of the 125th anniversary of its founding. So, I'd like to say to President Ryder, job well done. Secretary Valar, thank you for being who you are and always being a champion. But I also want to make sure that we don't forget the people who also make it happen every single day, and that, of course, is Norah K. Ryan and Andrea Kluger. And I also want to give thanks and support to the various member unions, who we all know, who are active in our wards, in our city, who are offering us support and advice. Now, again, we may not always agree on every issue, but we have a strong partnership that works for the workers of the city, and I'm very proud of it. So, on behalf of the city government, I wish you continued success and solidarity in the next 125 years. I'm sure we'll get into good trouble again together. Congratulations, Bob. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion to allow President Ryder the privilege of the floor?
I moved temporary suspension rules to allow my right to speak.
Hearing no objections, so order. President Ryder, you have the privilege of the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot. Thank you, members of the City Council. You know, I've been, for these last 125 years, I've been at the CFL for 11, and I truly have stood on the shoulders of giants who've led the organization. People like John Fitzpatrick, who rose to support Black Chicagoans who were being targeted during the Red Summer. Bill Lee, who carried this organization into the modern era. And I just want to speak to my last 11 years. We've done so many incredible things together in the City Council. And just in the last three and a half years with myself as president, we've done so many amazing things together: Fair Work Week, raising the minimum wage again, things that affect regular Chicagoans, most recently, the right-to-return ordinances Alderman Lopez referred to. Now, there are, to hear so many nice things from you folks directed specifically at me and, you know, the word "partnership" and "collaboration" and "compromise" being used, I was looking over my shoulder to see if there was another Bob Ryder in the room. But we have hard conversations, but we land the plane. And it's that working together and people being appreciative of the job that I have to do, fighting for working people. Because when I get up there and I grab the phone, or I grab a microphone, or I get in an office with somebody, and you see me coming at you, it's not me as a person that's coming at you, it's me as a person representing folks like my parents, construction workers, nurses, people like the folks who put on their boots every day to go to a job site or a factory here in the city of Chicago, healthcare workers, who are standing up and protecting us and our health and safety every day. That's what that means. Now, we have our disagreements, and there's always a process to resolve disagreements. But I'm proud for the support that the mayor and the members of this City Council have given us as a labor movement, to have a platform to raise workers' rights in a way that I think has been unprecedented within the last few years. If I look at the, I look at the volume of things that we've done, and people sometimes look to California as a leader in doing these types of ordinances and leading from the municipal level. But I'll put my money on the folks here in Chicago any day of the week, not just for what we do here in government, but the way we do it on the street, and how so many of you have supported us on the street doing it. Like I said, there's going to be times where we're going to, we're going to have a fight, and there's no one in this room that's probably immune to having a fight with me over some discreet issue. But there's always a process to resolve it, and there's always a way to land the plane. So, thank you so much for this resolution today. I also want to, I also want to make sure that I thank the people that I serve with, two of which could not be here today with me, three of which, actually, our first Vice President Rose Daly, who not only was a founder of the Coalition of the Labor Union Women, was also a founder of the Coalition of Black Trade Unionists, and spent her career working at Asme. James Connolly, from the Labor's District Council, whom many of you know as being a strong, firm voice for lifting up his members, many of which come from the neighborhoods of this great city. People of this great city, people who are making a buck for the first time in their life, and he takes their personal well-being personally to himself. And then my team that I work with every day, and I can't forget Jesse Rios, Jesse's our Sergeant-at-Arms. You want to talk about someone who fights on behalf of everybody every day from his perch there in Pilsen, but he was also a labor leader in his own right, leading the Department of Labor Local, the American Federation of Government Employees Local 648. Don Valar, my Secretary Treasurer, who you all know, Nora K. Ryan, Assistant to the President, Chief of Staff of CFL, and my Deputy Chief of Staff, Andrea Kluger. These are the people that helped me get into trouble every day trying to further the legacy of the CFL. And we will continue to lift up voices. The Chicago labor movement is a third Black, a third White, and almost a third Latino. And lifting up those leadership voices from our rank and file every day is critically important as we continue to listen about what we need to be doing to fight to protect working people every day, but also give rise to their leadership so that they can make a difference in people's lives as well. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot. Thank you, members of the City Council.
Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for passage of the resolution?
Madam President, I move passage of this resolution in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, I now move we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, communications.
I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows: Office of Inspector General's Third Quarter Report for year 2021, and Annual Report to the Department of Transportation regarding non-ordinance loading zone activities. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on October 14, 2021, which are required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form October 25, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of City Council of City Chicago. I, Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council ordinance authorizing the imposition of a tax levy approval of the year 2022 budget and execution of a service provider for Special Area Number 38, which was passed by the City Council on October 14, 2021, which was requested to be published in special pamphlet form, was published in special pamphlet form on October 19, 2021. Your Honor, this concludes communications by city officers.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Madam President, I would like to be recorded as being present.
So reflected. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, committee reports. We'll start with the Committee on Finance. Chairman Waguesback.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, Chairwoman Dowell and I move to defer and publish a series of budget-related reports.
They will be deferred and published. Can you identify them for the record?
Yes. Let me list these for everyone. Item number one is an ordinance authorizing the levy of real estate taxes for 2022. Item number two is a revenue ordinance amending various provisions of the Municipal Code regarding revenue derived from certain taxes, fines, and fees. And item number three is an ordinance authorizing amending certain bond ordinances and issuing various new bonds, and the levy and collection of direct annual taxes. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Waguesback. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairwoman Dowell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry I'm holding up progress here. I needed a little bit of coffee. Chairman Waguesback and I are going to move and defer and publish a series of budget-related items.
The items will be deferred and published. Please list them for the body.
Yes. Item number one is an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance for year 2021. Items two and three, a series of proposed corrections and revisions to the 2022 annual appropriation ordinance and the 2022 annual appropriation ordinance. Item number four is a resolution amending and updating the salary resolution. Item number five is an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority in Cook County for the allocation of motor fuel tax funds. Item number six is an ordinance concerning expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for 2022. Item number seven is an ordinance amending various provisions of the Municipal Code regarding technical and Scrivener corrections. And item number eight is the substitute management ordinance, amending various provisions of the Municipal Code regarding organizations and functions of city government. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairwoman Dowell. All those items reported out by Finance and Budget will be deferred and published. Next up, agreed calendar. Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you. Matters of the agreed calendar, I've received a list from the clerk, a listing of items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and memorial resolutions offered by Alderman, by the following Alderman: Alderman King, Alderman Burke, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taboris, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mitts, Alderman Spazado and others, Alderman Riley, Alderman Martin. I move passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, new business. The clerk will call the wards, beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspada has proposed orders for the issuance of permits to install signs as slimeboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for the renaming of the 1700 block of North Troop Street as North Ada Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Dowell has a proposed order for the issuance of permits free of charge for landmark property at 1936 South Michigan Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burke and others have proposed resolution to call for a Health Benefit Committee to guarantee continuation of healthcare benefits for non-paid status employees and their dependents during pending COVID-19 vaccination status dispute, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Two committees called, the Committee on Workforce Development and the Committee on Finance. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Taboris and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-74, by adding a new section 2-74-155 regarding City Council approval for discipline of non-paid status of city employees, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Two committees called, the Committee on Workforce Development and the Committee on Rules. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Irvin has proposed a resolution to call on the Chicago Police Department to create a criteria for sworn officers assigned to civilian positions, and to call on Chicago Police Department and Public Safety Administration to provide quarterly reports on why civilian work is performed by sworn officers, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Cardona has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-74, by adding a new section 2-74-155 regarding City Council approval for discipline and non-paid status for city employees, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Two committees have even called, the Committee on Workforce Development and the Committee on Rules. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Austin has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as LaMell Austin Jr. Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Austin also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Body of Christ Deliverance Ministries Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of the year 2022 annual appropriation ordinance for the Kinsey Industrial Corridor and the Near North Tax and Commit Financing Districts, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Viegas and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Chapter 2-8 of the Municipal Code by deleting current subsections or sections 2-8-300 through 2-8-810 and substituting with new sections 2-8-300 through 2-8-810 regarding redistricting of City of Chicago wards, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for the issuance of a grant of privilege in public way for NPG Ogden LLC for use and occupancy of the public parking lot on portion of North Columbus Drive, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Gardner has proposed ordinance for standardization of the 5300 and 5400 blocks of West Wilson Avenue as Honorary Paul Ready Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes the calling of the Aldermanic introductions.
Thank you. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business and move that, I'm not aware of any, I apologize. I'm not aware of any corrections to adjournment move that would be approved.
This is unfinished business.
I'm sorry, pardon me. I'm not aware of any unfinished business, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that all items previously sent to Rules Committee be re-referred to their original committee.
I believe that your motion is out of order.
Madam President, this is the same motion that Alderman Riley used last month when all items were sent to Rules?
It's actually not the same motion. You have to, there's...
Then I would move to suspend, temporarily suspend the Rules to re-refer these items.
There you are. There's a motion on the floor to move...
By roll call vote, please.
I move to lay it on the table.
I think the roll call comes first. All right, ladies and gentlemen, there is a motion on the floor to suspend the Rules in order to, and correct me here if I'm wrong, Alderman Lopez, a motion on the floor to suspend the Rules in order to move anything that was sent to Rules to the designated committee. Is that correct?
To re-refer them to their original committees, yes.
All right. That is the motion that's on the floor. We will have a roll call vote. So everyone's clear, the motion pending is to...
Suspend the Rules.
To suspend the Rules. So we've got to do step by step. The first motion is to suspend the Rules to consider whether or not we can send these items to the originally designated committees. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada is a no. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell is a no. Alderman King. Alderman King is a no. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is a no. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is a no. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is a yes. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Zalaski Garza is a no. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas is a no. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman. Sorry, I couldn't hear you. No. Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is a no. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is a no. Alderman Taboris. Alderman Taboris is a yes. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is a no. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Alderman Sichu Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett is a no. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin is a no. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Talafaro is a no. Alderman Boyas. Alderman Boyas is a no. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona is a no. Alderman Waguspac. Alderman Waguspac is a no. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin is a no. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas is a yes. Alderman Mitts. Alderman Mitts is a no. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Spazado is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith is a no. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a no. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman is a no. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a no.
The ayes are 20, the nays are 30. The motion fails. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, miscellaneous business. The Chair recognizes, is this with respect to miscellaneous business? Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, there were two items that were deferred and published at the last meeting, and based on our rules, any item that is deferred and published has to come back before our next regular scheduled meeting for a vote. There were two items that were being referred out from the Rules Committee that Alderman Riley DMP'd, and based on our rules, those two items should come back before this body for a vote at our next regular meeting. So with that, I ask for a roll call vote on this council having its own corporation council and legal representation, as well as the repeal of the speedlight camera ordinance.
Alderman Beal, did you move on a Rule 41 on either of these two items?
Madam President, there is no need for me to Rule 41 because the Rule 41 was posted previous, at the previous meeting, and the Rules Committee was reporting that issue out, and it was DMP'd, so it is incumbent on the Rules Committee to report out at our next regular meeting.
And you're aware, are you not, that did you speak to Rules Committee to make sure that that item was posted? Hold on, just let me finish. Posted on the agenda for this meeting so that we would be in compliance with the Open Meetings Act?
Well, Madam President, knowing that you have a full corporation council staff as well as communication from the IGA team...
So I'm asking you specifically about the Rules Committee.
Let me finish. And you have your own corporation council team as well as a full IGA team, I would think that your administration would have saw fit to make sure that our rules and regulations are being followed by making sure the Rules Committee reports out necessary and according to our rules.
Chairman, or Alderman Beal, obviously, as you well know, individual members who want to advance their matters have a certain responsibility. So my question for you, which you did not answer, and I'll try it again, is whether or not you motioned up or in any way conferred with the Chairman of Rules to make sure that these matters would actually be posted on the agenda for today's meeting. And did you do that? It's a simple yes or no, sir.
Madam President, I did not do that, so therefore I move... Madam President, I did not do that, so therefore I move for immediate consideration of these two ordinances by a roll call vote by this City Council.
Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Madam President, I move that we lay that motion on the table considering I...
Roll call.
Yes, we're roll call, but I move that we lay that on the table considering we're in the middle of our budget process.
So there's a motion to lay your motion on the table, which is recognizable at this time. By roll call vote, ladies and gentlemen, there's a motion to lay Alderman Beal's motion on the table. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. So the item that you're voting on is a motion to lay it on the table.
Alderman Tavarez. Alderman Tavarez is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell is a yes. Alderman King. Alderman King. Yes. Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison is a no. Alderman Sawyer.
You got a vote, man.
Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Zalaski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardenas. Cardenas is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Secho Lopez. Secho Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a no. Alderman Wagaspak. Wagaspak is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Viegas. Viegas is a no. Alderman Metz. Metz is a yes. Alderman Spazado. Spazado is a no. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a no. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a no. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
On the motion to lay it on the table, there are 29 yays and 21 nays. The motion passes. Alderman Mitchell, miscellaneous business.
Madam President, I am not aware anymore, any miscellaneous items.
Date and time of the next meeting.
I've handed out an ordinance to the clerk, setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section 1, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, October 27, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall 121, North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced until after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, the omnibus. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Thompson, on the motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it, the motion fails. Alderman Mitchell for the adjournment.
There being no further business before the body today, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned. We'll see you on Wednesday, folks.